This meeting is being recorded. Uh, Ms. Free, would you mind doing the invocation, please?
It's my, I have a loud background noise.
Okay. Oh, well. Um, as everybody else comes in, uh, Laurie, thank you for this day. Uh, we thank you God for your grace and your love. Thank you God for loving us unconditionally, Lord, that there's nothing that we can do like a separator from your love. Um, and so we're grateful for it. Um, we thank you for this time that we have to spend together that we can hear the voices of the citizens of this community. Um, your concerns, questions, uh, that we can, uh, just conduct the, the business of the city in an orderly fashion, God. Um, so Lord, you, we pray that you'll be in a midst, uh, that you continue to bless the city. Uh, heal the city, help the city to grow and flourish, uh, and bless this meeting tonight, uh, in Jesus' name we pray, amen. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you do the roll call, please?
All right. Hello, everybody. Um, Councilwoman Jones?
Good evening here.
Thank you, Councilman Harry.
Here.
Thank you, Councilman Harrison. Thank you, Councilwoman Gill.
Here.
Thank you, Councilwoman Fareed.
Here.
Thank you, Vice President Ferguson.
Yeah.
Thank you, President Curtis.
Here.
All right, we have a call.
Uh, can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So move.
Move by Councilman Harrison, second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Herring, discussion. Okay, I have one, uh, just would like to add the introduction of the resolution for, uh, Chief of Police, uh, that we've been working on, but couldn't, um, pull up yet without verifying some information, so just adding that as another introduction for this meeting. Any other discussion? Okay, uh, Madam Clerk, can we vote to accept the agenda?
Okay, Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Councilman Harry?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gill?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fareed?
Yes.
Vice President Ferguson?
Yes.
President Curtis?
Yes.
We have seven, this is passed.
All right, thank you. Uh, first item on agenda is just the introduction of the minutes. Uh, Madam Clerk, it's, uh, should have either put them in your inboxes or emailed you, uh, the minutes for October nineteenth, November sixteenth, and January, their work session, so if you have time, please take a look, we'll likely, um, vote on them and, uh, to accept them in the next meeting, so. Uh, next item is the introduction of the, um, resolution to approve appointment of Mr. Dean Stewart as the City Treasurer. Madam Clerk, would you, um, read it, Miss, uh, one second, Madam Clerk, Ms. Jones, could you allow me to, um, share a screen so I can pull it up for the citizens, so?
It's active.
Okay, thank you. Let's move it up. Put it over here. And increase it. All right, one second. Okay, Madam Clerk, can proceed. Uh, Madam Clerk, you're on mute if you're talking.
Oh, sorry. Resolution R dash XX dash two thousand twenty-two, introduced by Derek Curtis the Second, Council President, co-sponsors at the request of the Mayor, session, special regular meeting, date of introduction, and January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two, a resolution to approve appointment of Mr. Dean Stewart as City Treasurer. Whereas pursuant to section C dash eight zero one, City Treasurer of the City Charter, the City Treasurer shall be appointed by the Mayor with the approval of the City Council. And whereas the City Council wishes to appoint Dean Stewart to the position of Treasurer for the City of Glen Arden at the annual salary of eighty-six thousand, uh, ninety-one dollars, said appointment to be effective upon approval of the Council. And whereas this, uh, Council has determined that it is appropriate to approve the appointment of Mr. Dean Stewart as the Treasurer for the City. And whereas the firm Robert Half was retained to assist in identifying temporary services for the treasurer role with the understanding that should that individual become a regular employee in any role, that the City would be obligated to reimburse Robert Half an amount equal to thirty percent, which is the top rate of the sliding scale, which was further negotiated to seven percent of the budgeted salary for the City Treasurer. Now therefore be resolved by the City Council of Glen Arden, sitting in special regular meeting this eighteenth day of January two thousand twenty-two, as follows. Number one, that the appointment of Dean Stewart as Treasurer for the City of Glen Arden at the annual salary of eighty-six thousand ninety-one dollars, be it is hereby approved pursuant to the authority granted in section eight oh one of the Charter. Two, that the Council approves, um, the necessary expenditures of the payment to Robert Half of the conversion fee in the amount of six thousand twenty-six dollars and, uh, thirty-seven cents. Three, the Treasurer is authorized to undertake all the powers and duties as set out in section eight oh two of the City Charter. Number four, this rails, this, sorry, this resolution so take effect immediately upon passage of the City Council.
Okay. Thank you. Is there, uh, any questions or discussions from the Council? Uh, Mr. Harry, I know one of the questions you had was the conversion fee. Um, as we discussed in our executive session, um, it was my understanding that it was a slide scale to zero, but it was only a slider scale, um, to, uh, I forgot what percentage, but we were able to negotiate it, um, down to seven percent, uh, which is actually lower than what we had, uh, for the council clerk percentage. And I think that was the end of it. Did you have any questions, Councilman Herring, as it relates to that?
Uh, yeah, um, and how much was that? How much was it to buy out the contract? Was it six?
Six thousand twenty-six dollars and thirty-seven cents.
Okay, also question on the resolution, shouldn't it also be, uh, pursuant upon a, uh, um, a satisfactory background check? We still gotta do the background check on both the treasurer and, uh?
Okay, we could put that on there. Um, so we'll put that on there and we actually changed the date because it's not effective on the eighteenth day of January. There's just a introduction, so the date will change and we could put pursuant to, um, uh, the background check. Any other questions from Council, the Council on the Free, and then I'll go to Councilman Jones, sorry.
Yeah, says Mr. Stewart needs to be bonded, and if so, should that be added in the plus of him being bonded added?
Um.
Mr. President?
Councilman Harry?
Well, he's born on, he's automatically bonded under insurance policy.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Jones?
Uh, yes, when the, um, I think I remember, um, we got an opinion from the attorney and when, uh, hiring folks, uh, when we were gonna hire the, um, a city manager and a police chief, the salaries went up. Well, I, I don't know, um, how they went up, but, um, why didn't the treasurer salary go up also?
Uh, I'm sorry, say it again?
Uh, the, when we, when we went to hire a city manager and the police chief, both of those salaries jumped, especially the city manager went from what it was in the budget to, I think, like a hundred thousand dollars. Um, why wasn't the, uh, the treasurer's salary also raised? Um, I think Mr. Kapinski had advised us, in order to get good people, we would have to raise those salaries, and those salaries did go up for those two, um, positions. And the, I'm seeing that the, um, salary for the, uh, treasurer was not raised.
I mean, we can certainly discuss raising it if, if that is, uh, you know, a concern. I mean, I'm, I'm open to discuss.
Consider, considering his, his, um, educational background, his experience and what he's done for the city, I think that, that his salary should be raised a little more than eighty-six.
Okay. Um, Councilman Harry?
Uh, but right now, we're, we're going with what was approved in the budget for all those positions.
Correct.
Yeah.
I don't think we know what was in the budget for the city manager.
Yeah, it's a hundred thousand dollars in the budget for the city manager, because, uh, I think, um, I think the council president was the one that recommended that amount.
Mm-hmm. I, I think that, uh, so, Councilwoman Jones, I, I'm in agreement with you. Uh, also think that we could, I mean, this is what was already approved in the budget. I think that, given the six-month probationary period, you know, if we can work through that six-month of, of, uh, the, the, six-month probationary period, maybe, uh, we could negotiate a higher rate, um, depending upon satisfactory, um, completion of the six-month period to a new rate, uh, which could be included in the twenty twenty-three budget, because for both positions, the, the city manager and the, um, city treasurer, uh, that six months will be up in the new, pretty much the new year, ending June. What were your thoughts on that?
I'd, it, it was recommended by the Council President, which was yourself, to, uh, ha, you know, the, uh, raise the, uh, the amount of monies for the city manager, and I think for the police, uh, chief, I'll go back and look at that, but I thought they were, both of those salaries were raised for both of those positions, and I just feel like eighty-six for, for the experience and the educational background that we're getting in a treasurer and for the, um, uh, phenomenal job that he's done with the city so far, eighty-six is, is really low.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions, concerns? And, and just to render, I, I agree, uh, Councilwoman Jones, uh, given, you know, today's market, uh, inflation and everything else, um, just was trying to balance, when do we do that upfront, or, um, at the end, it really doesn't matter to me, actually, uh, but just want to stay, you know, fiscally responsible in terms of where do we get that, where do we pull that money from? Halfway into the, the year, so. Okay, uh, if no other comments from the Council, the last, uh, bit of legislation is the, um, legislation to introduce, uh, Mr. Regis Bryant as the new Chief of Police for the City of Glen Arden. Uh, let me pull that up. Here we go. Check my screen. Madam Clerk, you're on mute, put your up.
Alrighty, resolution R dash XX dash two thousand twenty-two, introduced by Derek Curtis the Second, Council President, co-sponsored at the request of the Mayor, this session, which will be corrected, special regular meeting, date of introduction, January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two, resolution to approve appointment of Captain Regis Bryant as the Chief of Police for the City of Glen Arden, Maryland. Whereas pursuant to section nine oh one, authority to employ personnel of the City of Glen Arden Charter, the Chief of Police as head of the Police Department shall be appointed by the Mayor with approval of the Council, and whereas based on the judgment, experience, and recommendation of two career officers and former Deputy Attorney General of the State of Maryland, who did conduct interviews on the twenty-sixth of October to determine Captain Regis Bryant, the candidate most ready to assume the role, and whereas the City Council wishes to appoint Captain Regis Bryant for the position of Chief of Police for the City of Glen Arden at the annual salary indicated in the budget, with said appointment to be effective upon approval of this resolution by the City Council, and whereas the City has determined that it is appropriate to approve the appointment of Captain Regis Bryant as the Chief of Police for the City of Glen Arden, and now therefore it be resolved by the City Council of Glen Arden, sitting in special regular meeting this eighteenth day of January two thousand twenty-two, as follows. Number one, the appointment of Captain Regis Bryant as Chief of Police for the City of Glen Arden at the annual salary indicated in the budget. Be in, and it is hereby approved pursuant to the authority granted in section nine oh one of the City of Glen Arden's charter, two, that the Chief of Police is authorized to undertake all the powers and duties as set out in the Constitution of the State of Maryland, the Constitution of the United States of America, and the City Charter of the City of Glen Arden. Number three, this resolution shall take effect immediately upon passage by the Glen Arden City Council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any discussion about a council? Uh, just thinking about what Councilman Herring just stated, uh, one of the conditions that we have to update it is that, uh, Mr. Bryant be commissioned as a police officer in the state of Maryland. Because currently he is not.
Um, also, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
And does it, does this one has, um, upon, upon successful completion of a background check also?
And we will put that. Does she get that, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? Okay. Uh, I did want to recognize, um, uh, HR, um, Schultz, who worked tirelessly on the phone to negotiate and renegotiate and negotiate again, um, the buyout percentage, um, you know, uh, for, uh, Robert Half, I know that she had to keep on going back to squeeze them more and more and more, as we discussed, uh, trying to get a lower rate, so, and I know that was, you know, a big ordeal, so, um, kudos to Ms. Schultz for being able to, to successfully negotiate that. All right, well, with that, uh, that is all that we have under, um, our legislative, uh, agenda. Now, I would like to, if there are no other comments about a council related to legislation, open it up to, uh, citizens' comments. Uh, just as a reminder, please raise your hand if you have a question, concern, or want to address anything with the council. Uh, each citizen will be given five minutes, uh, which I will politely, if you try to go over, I'll politely, uh, ask that, anything over five minutes that you would, um, please send the rest of your comments in the email, um, or if you're so, you know, patient, wait till the next, uh, public hearing, but, um, um, that will be all. All right, thank you. I see, uh, Mrs. Carolyn, uh, hand first. And you are on mute, Ms. Smallwood, I believe.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am, we can.
Okay, I was late signing off. Um, my first question, I don't know whether or not it was answered, um, about the contract being bought out from, uh, Robert Half for the City Treasurer.
Mm-hmm.
Has that been done?
Uh, I'm sorry, are you asking if we've already bought them, the treasurer out?
I'm asking, have y'all looked into the process, because I was late signing on. And my asked question was, have you looked into the process, or what is it gonna cost to have the treasurer contract go out?
Yes, okay, thank you. Uh, yes, it's the same, so in the resolution, we pointed out that, uh, the percentage on a slider scale, it starts.
You can't take up my time. My other part of the question to that is, have y'all done a background check on him? Yes or no?
No, it will be done, but not currently, no.
Right, you haven't done it, okay, that's good. Um, my other question is, when will y'all start sending out the correct heading for these meetings? You got a special regular meeting. This is supposed to be a public hearing, so y'all need to start a correct, putting the correct headings on these meetings, okay? Uh, my other two state, oh, have y'all did, uh, GS practice contract?
I'm sorry, have we, what?
Y'all approved legislation for GS practice contract.
Hmm, I don't think so.
Okay, you know, this session is ended, we have nobody down there to represent the Glen Arden for, for whatever avenues are for the city?
Okay.
Okay, we'll move on. All right, my other, my other questions, they're not questions, just statements. I want to clarify a statement that was made by Angela Ferguson last week, rather than I had the chance to read it. Ms. Ferguson, even though you was not the direct supervisor to the clerk, you are still responsible a, as to what is going on, and is what has, and what was transpired. Um, it happened, and you stood there and you said nothing, so that you still, you are just as much as responsible as the Council President. An example of that is when the City Treas, uh, City Manager in Capitol Heights stood by and didn't say nothing. Capitol Heights was sued, and the young lady won her money, won the lawsuit. I call Mrs. Cross, uh, let me back you up to a conversation we had. We had a conversation either in the latter part, in the middle of August, or the first week in September, when I called the office and complained about the marquee. You and I had a long-length conversation, you talked about colorblind, and then you told me that you had went to the doctor, to the eye doctor, I, for whatever reason, and for me to tell the citizens that they need to put their glasses on to read the marquee. The marquee is still a mess. If you come on to Glen Arden Ward one sign and you stop and try to read the marquee, you still cannot read that marquee. She got too much work up her, she got the colors of this wrong, and the citizens are constantly complaining about the marquee. I would also like to get from you is a copy of the colorblind study that you had. I would like to get a copy of that. And I think that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Smallwood. Um, Mayor Cross?
She don't need to respond. Thank you, Council President. Um, I do, I have, I did send an email out with the colorblind study. I also copied it to your, uh, ward representative, uh, when we had that discussion. Uh, as a matter of record, I did not tell you to tell the citizens to put their glasses on. What I said was, inform the citizens that we are matching colorblind standards, because there are people who cannot actually see the sign. So now that, I will agree with you that the sign has a lot of verbiage, and I did, after our last conversation, uh, talk to our, uh, webmaster and ask her to minimize the verbiage and be more concise in what goes on the sign. But, uh, what we talked about was, we are matching the Americas with Disability Act colorblind standards with this sign. I did not ask you to tell the citizens to put their glasses on. We had a conversation about, yes, me having to go to the eye doctor, and you said you were changing your glasses, and we had a personal conversation about glasses. That was not for you to tell anyone that, that's what I required of my citizens. In fact, we are simply matching ADA complacency when it comes down to this sign. But we, we are taking into account that there is a lot of verbiage on that sign. I agree with you. We are going to manage that verbiage to be more concise when we put the information out, because the words can't be tiny print to win a lot of paragraphs. It's supposed to be concise and to the point. I agree with you there, and we are taking another look at it.
Thank you, Mayor Cross. Again, uh, for citizens, if you would like to.
Can I respond to her?
Well, you didn't use your five minutes, so you have one minute left, uh, Councilwoman Ferguson.
Mayor Cross.
Sorry.
I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna go into a, uh, argument of he say, she say. But for the record, you distinctly told me to tell the seniors to put their glasses on. You don't have to be, but revert, uh, respond to this. It's your word and my word, and I, and I can hear very, very well, and I can comprehend very, very well. So I don't need you to respond back to this, because the more you respond back to this, just make you look bad. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smallwood. Please mute your phone. Uh, Ms. Jones, oh no, she, she did it. Uh, and just one more point of clarification, that the, the meeting is labeled correctly, uh, because, uh, legislation can only be introduced at, uh, a regular or special meeting, which is why I changed it to a special regular meeting, which also still gives the citizens the ability to, um, comment as a public here. Any other questions, concerns, comments by the citizens? Uh, do not see hands, uh, if you do not know how to raise your hand, um, can feel free to unmute yourself. Uh, Ms. Wilson, Ms. Wilson? You are on mute.
Good evening, I'm so sorry. So, could you clarify for me? Um, are we gonna be having public hearings, or we're not gonna be having public hearings?
Well, public hearings is not necessarily, uh, you know, a meeting, it's a, a public hearing is the ability to, for the public to speak, and those components are part of the regular meeting, uh, and part of basically, uh, any special regular meeting that we have. uh and part of basically uh any special regular meeting that we have. So it's, you know, this still is a public here, you can speak on any legislation that we have. Um, you know, we've brought forth two today. Um, you know, Mrs. Smallwood spoke on um the GS Proctor that we have to get through. Um, so this is, you know, though it's labeled as a special regular meeting, it's component of citizens' comments makes it a public hearing.
So we're not going to, uh, uh, for clarification sake, uh, because I want to, I want it made perfectly clear to me that we will not be having meetings labeled as public hearings. A specific, excuse me, specifically only for to talk about the, the legislation that will be coming forth, that will be voted on uh at the next regular meeting. Because that's what was done in the past, so I'm just trying to get clarification because um there's confusion as to, are we having public meetings or we're not having them? Uh, when is it? Citizens don't know. Because you, things are labeled, it, you know, there, there's a, 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 a listing of when we have meetings. First, you know, on the first Monday, it's a work session. Second Monday of the month, it's a regular meeting. And then I, I believe on the third Tuesday, it was a public hearing. So uh citizens would know that that's what wa- what was expected, we, we could expect that. So I just wanted to make sure that I understand clearly that we're not having anything labeled public hearing. Is that what you're telling me?
Um, whether we label it public hearing or special regular meeting, the intent is to hear the voice of the people, so.
Yeah, sir, sir, Mr. Curtis, sir. So I'm just asking, yes or no, we will not be ha- seeing anything that will be labeled public hearing? That's all I wanna know, yes or no? It's not, it's not whether or not, it's will we see anything that's labeled public hearing?
Uh, you may see things labeled as public hearing.
But the, but the set, but the third Tuesday of the month is not designated specifically for that, will not be called that. Is that what you're saying?
No, it could be called that.
Mr. Curtis, I just need a yes or no.
Yeah, yes, it could be called that.
No, not could it be called, will it be called? That's, uh, that's what I'm looking for. If I, if I go past a sandwich board or if I'm looking at the marquee or even if I'm not looking at those things, I already know that on the third Tuesday of the month, a public hearing is scheduled and that's what I wanna know, is that what will be, what, what we'll be having?
Can I ask you a question?
Sure you can.
So, for understanding, what is your, what is the purpose? What is the definition of your public hearing? Cause I think maybe that.
Not, not my public hearing, Mr. Curtis.
No, 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 I'm asking, cause I think that may be where the disconnect is. So what would you, what would you define as a public hearing?
Uh, how we, how we did things in the past and that's what I wanna know, is that what we're doing or we're not doing that now?
And my answer will stay the same, that it, it could or could not in this case. Um, to be consistent with the charter until the charter committee, you know, uh, provides more detail around when a, a resolution can be introduced. According to the charter, the resolution can only be introduced at any regular or special meeting. Uh, me labeling the meeting as a public hearing, I thought would provide to uh, you know, unnecessary red tape and challenges for us to introduce very important legislation to fill the positions we have open. So that is why I made the decision to label it as a special regular meeting so that there wouldn't be any hurdles trying to introduce this legislation. At the same time, uh, killing two birds with one stone, still having that component of opening the meeting for public comments of anything that the co- uh, uh, citizens want to talk about, whether it be legislation, whether it be something wrong with this adblock or, or whatever you wanna spend your five minutes on. Uh, so uh, I can't be tied down to uh yes or no, cause it could be. It could be something that's an emergency that I, we have to switch it at the last minute to a special regular meeting to introduce important legislation and have public comment by the um, by the citizens, so.
So, so is it my understanding that you're saying that in the future that we will not be receiving legislation prior to um, pri- prior to this meeting? It, for, even for people who, if, let's say for people who don't have computers, cannot get on the website, blah, blah, blah. So, is legislation gonna be available to them prior to the meeting so that they'd be able to see it and be able to comment on if they had, if people, if citizens had comments or questions?
Yes, they will. We will have another special meeting next week um pursuant to the uh charter uh where we will vote on this legislation. And before we vote on a legislation, we will have citizens' comments to, to hear how they feel about the legislation. This will give them an entire, uh, entire week to, to look over the legislation that we've introduced for the, 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 um, the, actually, this is a little bit different because this is.
I know this is different, yes, I, I recognize this is different because it has to do with personnel.
Yeah, so it might be in this case.
Yeah, but not in this case, I'm not speaking o- on this type of legislation. I'm talking on legislation period.
And so am I, so in, in general, if it doesn't have anything to do with personnel, uh, we would introduce it. And then at the next meeting, we would uh hear public comments about it before we voted on it. Uh, and then, you know, each council member would have uh opportunity to hear how the public feels about it. Uh, and it could weigh on their decision whether to vote yea or nay on the, the legislation and then we will vote.
So the legislation will be made available to citizens?
Yes, ma'am.
All, all legislation will be made available to citizens prior to, I'm not talking the night of voting, but I'm saying prior to um, the time that it, it, let's say a week before you have, a week, two weeks before you have to vote on it.
Yes, ma'am, with the caveat that emergency resolutions, uh, you know, does not have the same standard, you can't introduce it and pass it in the same night if it is an emergency. For example, a snowstorm happened, okay? All right, I just wanted to give that caveat for, we are recording, so I just want to put that in there.
Okay.
The.
I just hope we're going according to the charter.
We are.
We'll see.
Okay. Thank you. Any other?
You're so welcome, you're so welcome, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Any other comments, concerns, questions from uh the public? Again, you can either virtually raise your hand or if you do not know how to raise your hand, you can unmute yourself.
Mr. President.
Councilman Harry.
Um, seeing as there is no other one, no other citizen, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
Okay, I was getting there, but thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Well, with no other uh citizens' comments, thank you guys for joining the meeting. Uh, this meeting is seven thirty-nine, this meeting is now adjourned, thank you.